Good evening. I'm Randy Horton. I'm the current president of the Emeryville Police Officers Association. Yesterday at a, or Monday, I guess it would be Monday, the 5th, we had a association meeting. At that meeting, I was directed by the membership to draft a letter to be forwarded to the city council. And I was also directed to appear at this meeting and try to present the letter to you and also read it to you if you would allow me to do so. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, the Emeryville Police Officers Association would like to express its support for the men and women of the association while involved in the performance of their duties. The Emeryville Police Officers Association is committed to providing the best possible police services to the citizens, merchants, and visitors in our community. Accusations of misconduct and improper investigations have been made against members of our association. The men and women of the Emeryville Police Officers Association are committed, hardworking, professional law enforcement officers and deserve to be treated as such. We conduct ourselves in a professional manner without bias or prejudice toward any person or persons. And when accusations are made against any member of the association, it tends to paint all the members with the same brush of misconduct and unprofessionalism. The men and women of the Emeryville Police Officers Association took a sworn oath to uphold and enforce the law. Our professionalism and commitment will always remain a top priority of the members of the association. While the association recognizes that from time to time there may be questions and conflicts concerning the actions of our members, it is always our desire that the truth of the matter be known and that a resolution to any problems be achieved. To this end, we offer our support to you, the city council, in attaining this truth and welcome any requests that you may have of us. The Emeryville Police Officers Association and the city councils of the past have always enjoyed a strong and meaningful working relationship that has been built on trust, candor, and respect. It is our sincere hope that this relationship will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
If there are any questions, I hope not.
Well, I've got a question because I heard your letter, but I don't know what it's pertaining to. If you care to explain it, I would like to know because I'm not aware of just what the letter means.
Specifically, I believe it has to do with an investigation that involves ABC violations, a minor decoy operation at the Christie Barn Grill.
I know about that. I've heard about that. Okay, I just want, you know, I was kind of dumbfounded because I didn't, I really didn't know what the letter meant, but now I do. Okay, I can appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor Cassis.
I'd like to use this opportunity to express my strong support for our police department and the job that they're doing for the city out there every day. I think that there have been a lot of reckless comments made that I take great issue with. And I want to carry that a step further to say that I also want to express my strong support for our police chief. There are rumors floating around as recently as today that people are out to get people and that they've got the votes to do it. And those make me sick when I hear those kind of rumors floating around. I want to put them to rest. We are damn lucky to have you, Joe, and I hope you can stand up to all this stuff that's going on right now and keep going with directing a very, very professional department that I'm very proud of. And I want to also, since I'm doing this and this was not planned, but I want to take the same opportunity to direct the same comments to our city manager because he appears to be the other person in the breach. And again, to express my strong support for John Flores and the job that he's done in the past and right up to right now, leading this city through some very difficult times and through some very positive developments. I hope that John is still sitting here 10 years from now and he has my full support in the way that he directs and runs the staff and the crew in the city. I'm very proud of what we've done. I'm very proud of what you've done, John. And I want to be sure that a lot of this negativism that's been generated in this community, that people understand that it doesn't come from everyone and that a lot of us believe in what we're doing and we believe that we're going to continue, that we're on the right path, and that we need to support these people so that they won't get disgusted and walk away in view of the onslaught that I think has been unfairly leveled with them.
I would like to make a few comments, and I think probably the letter is more directed towards me than any of the other members. Throughout my entire term here as a city council member, I have probably given, lent, and done more things to support the police department than any of the other council members. And I'm always pushing to have more police. The last meeting we had, we had a discussion of an off-duty policy that was aimed at trying to get the men and women at the police department given the opportunity to work off-duty, again with the idea of trying to increase police presence. Every member of the police department does not, you know, carry out a perfect job. And there are some issues and questions that come out as a result of some of the things they do. It, I like to write a lot of information. Confidential information that I shared with Nora Davis became public information and was turned over to the city manager and others. I don't regret anything that I ever wrote and never will. I have been mistaken about a few things and, you know, am open enough to admit that there was some mistakes made. But the general reason that the comments were made were not necessarily incorrect. And I don't want to, you know, go into the idea of trying to find anybody particularly at fault. But when I do see things or I hear things, I have the, I usually put them on paper and that's, so in this particular circumstance, I think that's the reason that some of these rumors or whatever got started. I do have some criticism of the city manager's performance, which is not, which doesn't agree with Dick Cassis's opinion. And to that end, I've expressed them confidentially and the information was given out. So that's the basis for what's happening here. And as I said before, I support the police department wholeheartedly. I always have and I probably always will, even though some of the actions were, in this case, the decoy program as I see it wasn't not really conducted the way I think it should have. And the results of the program showed that it wasn't a success. And I have since prepared a letter to the state director of the ABC to inform him of the areas I think where were not, could be done better or could make the program successful. And to that end, we'll see what happens with it. So, thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Well, speaking of which, hi, my name's Joe Lutz, long-term resident of Emeryville. And I've been asked to step up here by several friends throughout the city, most of them long-term residents who have been through the tough years that you were describing before, Dick. And maybe we can reflect on some lessons that were learned. I remember back in the mid-'70s to mid-'80s, okay, we had a police department that was disrespected by the various communities around. There wasn't a sharing of knowledge or anything else. We had a planning process that was non-coherent at best, and Dick alluded to it a little bit yourself. And actually, the developers ran the planning process at that point. And the city agenda was really a personal and hidden agenda back in those days. Now, thanks primarily to the efforts of Joe Coletti, we have a well-respected police department. As a matter of fact, our city services are second to none, including the fire department and the police department. Our planning process is excellent. I mean, all we have to do is take a look around. And we have lost in the last couple of years Ann Hayden, Harry Hecht, Kofi Bonner, and Kay Quinn. Very heavyweight people. And we're still going forward. That's due to great city staff and an excellent city manager with John Flores. I've talked to a lot of people, and one of the things that we don't want to do is we don't want to let this wonderful city staff that we have, that's working so well together, split. We want it to stay here, okay? And we don't want to slip back into those bad old days when the city government was run by personal agenda items and frustrating and blocking important city things. There are a lot of people that are a little bit upset right now. And Ken, I'm telling you, what Dick said, a lot of people agree with. They like the work Joe's done. They like the work John's done. And they're very happy with the current staff. They think it's the finest staff we've had in this city. So I'm here to support everything that you're doing. We're very happy and we want to see that happen. And we want to see the negativity gone. Okay, thank you.
I'm Chris Owens, and I live at Pacific Park Plaza. And I missed the last council meeting, but I got an earful when I came back from my call in ranch from a number of citizens in my building. And I'm basically speaking on behalf of the large and diverse group of citizens of Emeryville. Everybody concurs that we have a great city. We have a great city manager, a great police department, and a great fire department. And especially our city manager, whose total concern is to help the city move forward. We are concerned about efforts that are being made by an elected official to constantly undermine the city manager's ability to perform his job in the most productive way. So we want to state that even though we didn't have an election last year, unless there is an attitude adjustment and a sign of cooperation with city staff by the elected official, that there's a large group of citizens ready and prepared to initiate the process to have an election this year. Thank you.
I would like to make a comment here, and I don't know if-
Pardon me, Councilmember Bukowski. This is citizens to be heard. You all have an opportunity.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hello, Scott Banks, Six Commodore. To me, it's a given that John Flores and Chief Coletti have done a wonderful job. I'm very thankful to their persistence and patience and professionalism that they have exhibited. I specifically want to make my comments regarding the sale of alcohol to minors. I observe personally in the city an excessive amount of alcohol and substance abuse myself. The concept of not selling alcohol to minors is not a new one. The idea that a business, an alcohol business, loses their privilege to sell alcohol if they violate that rule is not a new concept. The alcohol industry is a profitable one. If they want to change that law, they can use their significant resources to lobby to do that. I'm requesting city council and city staff to take a zero tolerance towards the sale of alcohol to minors in the city. And I realize that several alcohol-selling businesses have been stung by this recently. I, one figure I heard was 20 out of 27 businesses in Emeryville had gotten stung on this. And, but at the same time, they have to accept personal responsibility that this is not acceptable under state law. And I feel that there's no excuse for it. And I applaud our city staff and city council for making sure that that's enforced. If people want to buy alcohol for minors, they can go to our neighboring cities or they can do as I did when I was 17 and borrow IDs and sneak in places. It's kind of a rite of passage, consuming alcohol and tobacco in our culture as a proof of adulthood. But we don't have to condone and contribute to that to the people under 21 or under 18 here in Emeryville. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Dave.
Good evening, members of council, Madam Mayor. I came just to sit in on a meeting tonight, and really, I'm kind of taken back by all of what has been said. But perhaps as the longest existing person in this room, certainly as far as knowing the background of Emeryville, I think we have much to be proud of. And certainly, there's every reason for you as our elected representatives to pull it together and be working. And we've done some great things, but we all know there's so much more to do. So I would say we, I almost felt like I couldn't stay seated. I think, what is he thinking? And I just wanted to say, I think we have a great staff in John and Joe and all of you. And we ought to really make every effort to pull this thing together and move forward. That's what, I couldn't sit down and let it go. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Do I get my comment now, or is it not appropriate?
Certainly, Councilmember Bukowski.
I just want to say that, you know, the city manager and the police chief are employees of the city council. And if anybody thinks that it's wrong, to be critical when you think you see things that need to be discussed, then, you know, if you want to turn your head the other way and you want to look and say that things are not done, that no things are done wrong or whatever, then that may be the opinion of most people. But when I see things that I don't think are appropriate, I speak about them and I talk about them. And there are things that I think have been done that are not appropriate. And before anybody just, you know, jumps to any conclusions and says, well, you know, we have a great staff and we have this, that, and the other, for the most part, we have a good staff. And for the most part, I've worked with the manager and the police chief for all these years. I've been on this council eight years, and I'm sure you all know that I've been instrumental in making a lot of the things happen along with the rest of the members of the council. I think I have exhausted many conversations with the city manager and expressed my opinion. And I still didn't see any change. And even to this minute, I don't know that another city manager would necessarily be better for the city. And I would exhaust another opportunity to try to work with Mr. Flores. But I cannot look the other way when I see things happening that I don't think are appropriate. And I don't know what the forum is for putting them out there. If you write them and put them out there, then you're slandering somebody and you're ruining their personal opinion. So I don't know where the council member's ability is to criticize and where the ability of the citizens is to hear that criticism. I have since learned, since this process began, that a city manager can actually, almost forbid a department head from communicating with a council member, which I didn't really realize or know or even thought about at the beginning of this process. You know, if the police department, if you work cooperatively with somebody for a number of years and the police department all of a sudden doesn't communicate with you, you know, you have a little bit of concern. The next thing that happens is a decoy minor is sent in your place and, you know, you get popped for selling alcohol to a minor. The next thing that happens is someone comes down and inspects all the liquor bottles from the ABC. Well, when the communication stops and these things start happening, it's not so unusual that somebody would consider themselves to be a target. When the police department has a problem with a business and doesn't say anything to the owner of the business, doesn't say that, you know, we have a problem or anything, and when you ask them, oh, no, there's no action or whatever taken. And then the next thing you know, there's a file down at the DA's office trying to press criminal charges against you for operating a bad place, when nobody even came and said, hey, you know, there's a problem. I think that there's some opinions here that figure that any contact between the police and a council member is special treatment or special favors or whatever. I think the department heads have been petrified that if they even speak with me, that it's some kind of special treatment or some kind of special favor. Well, not only haven't I received special treatments or special favors, but it's gone 180 degrees the other way where you don't get any consideration at all. And I don't think that's appropriate either. I think there's problems at the marketplace. I think there's problems that need to be resolved. And this past weekend, with the security and the police working in cooperation, I saw a cooperative effort that I have never witnessed before between security and the police. And hopefully, it'll be the beginning of the end of the problems that were there. I had a business there with Silks for a number of years, and we had plenty of security, and we didn't have these kind of problems. The Martin Company took the property over. I've expressed to them many, many times that they need security there, and it fell on deaf ears. They had two operators come into that place to operate discos or nighttime entertainment, which I absolutely advised against. I urged the council not to approve their cabaret permit. I told the landlord not to lease to them. My 10 years' experience went, fell on deaf ears, and they went ahead and did it anyway. And that was the beginning of bringing a lot of the wrong people around there. One of the places used to have private parties and invite them there. So that's one of the reasons for those problems. But again, I've always supported the police department. I support the efforts to clean the marketplace up and bring these problems, and have these problems go away. And that's the approach I've taken. But I don't want to feel that I can't criticize either the city manager or the police chief or anybody that works here in the city. And, you know, if I had the ability to put it out there, you might agree with some of those criticisms. You know, I raised an issue about 53rd Street at the very onset of the Chiron Project. And despite the fact that I raised it, despite the fact that the council saw it as an issue, it didn't even show up in the final EIR address. It was addressed orally, but it wasn't addressed in the final EIR. And I have a concern about that. If the council raises an issue, I think it deserves the attention and respect that it should get. And that's the way it went. So that's a brief description or history of some of the situations. Hopefully, they can be resolved. I'm not looking to fire anybody, and I don't necessarily want to see that happen. But I think if certain things don't change, they need to be put out there and then the people need to evaluate for themselves what the situation is. So, thank you.
I hate to, but I need to respond. Ken, I just want to say that I think you've done a lot of good things for the city. I really do. And I think that generally, your heart in terms of the interest of the city is in the right place. And I will be the first to stand up and say that you absolutely have the right to ask questions and to obtain material and to put matters on the agenda and to criticize when there's something wrong. But, and I just have to say it because where I have to draw the line is when that criticism becomes reckless. And I'm going to refer to a couple of things. And one is, I don't know, a year ago or so, when you sat in this council chamber and accused the city attorney of collusion with a developer relative to the buzzy project because you didn't want to see that project go through. That was a reckless statement. That's not criticism. That's recklessness. And that's the kind of stuff that drives good staff people away. And to this day, Mike Biddle is very upset about that. And when we looked at what he proposed for his contract with the city to go on here, you saw a lot of language in there to try to prevent that kind of stuff from happening again. I don't want to see that again, Ken. That's not appropriate. And the same way that initially, and I understand it's your business, it's your livelihood, but when the whole thing came down with the decoy operation on the heels of what happened with the parking spaces for the black and white, you decided you were being targeted. And you said a lot of reckless things that turned out not to be true. And in fact, 25 businesses in this town went the same route that your business did because of violations. And you've since admitted, and I appreciate the fact that you've admitted it, but you can't just wipe it away and say, well, you know, I believed it at the time. Those are the kinds of things that are not constructive criticism. They're not the kind of criticism that this city ought to be, or that staff of this city ought to be subjected to. These people are people. They have feelings. They have cares. They give their hearts and souls to the city. And yeah, they can make mistakes. And I agree with you, and we've talked about it. And there are certainly some ways that I think that the whole decoy thing could have come down to be better publicized. And I'm sure if we'd have all looked at it and massaged it ahead of time, we might have done some things differently. But in my opinion, it was done in good faith, and there were some real efforts to communicate out there. I mean, when you tell the businesses ahead of time, we're going to send a decoy out, folks, and he's going to be underage. And come on over, and we'll sort of tell you how to avoid all this. And four businesses show up for the first session to explain to them how to protect their liquor licenses. Something's wrong. Now, again, there was a big hiatus at time when ABC wasn't out enforcing this, and it got thrown to the city to do it. And because of that, we probably should have done some better PR work in terms of working with the businesses ahead of time. And I've agreed with that and said that publicly. But, you know, we, I appreciate the fact that a lot of the fax stuff that you're sending out has decreased. And I don't want to get into details of that and the discussions behind closed doors. But I've understood that as recently as this weekend, comments have been attributed to you saying that you're going to get the city manager and you're going to get the police chief, and that you've got two votes to do that right now, and you're just working on the third. And if those comments are true, and they're really attributed to you, and maybe they're not, and I hope they're not, but it's the kind of stuff you've said before, that's got to stop. Because that's going to undermine the whole thing we're trying to do in this town and moving forward positively. And I really hate to have a public airing of our dirty laundry, but it seems that trying to handle all this privately is not working. And so I just felt compelled to say that while I will support your right to criticize, it's the way you do it sometimes when you run wild that the city cannot afford to have, and it upsets me as a fellow council member.
Okay, well, those comments were not made this past weekend to begin with. The situation with the city attorney was that the previous city attorney had written me an opinion that I did not have a conflict of interest about the situation. Well, knowing that I was opposed to this project, and everybody has the right to be in favor or opposed to whatever they want, knowing that I was opposed to the project, knowing that I was trying to prepare some effort to stop the project two hours before the meeting and the hearing, the city attorney notifies me that I have a conflict of interest. Now, the previous attorney had written me an opinion that I did not have one. And Mike Biddle, who's been here for five or six years, felt that years ago the previous city attorney had written me an opinion that he didn't agree with. He had ample time to talk to me as a person and say, well, okay, you know, I think you have a conflict of interest. You should step aside from this. But you don't wait until two hours before the meeting to all of a sudden notify somebody when they're in the middle of preparing opposition to a project. I think that was inappropriate. It's, to this day, it will never be appropriate. And if you get the opinion, well, gee, you know, he must be working with the developer or something to do that when he already knew in advance that that was a situation that he should have notified me. And in fact, he, the city manager really notified me, not the city attorney. Now, we have a relation here where the attorney works directly for the city council. I think it would have been appropriate for the city attorney to contact me directly and long before the two-hour period. So, you know, maybe he wasn't working in collusion with the developer, but it certainly appeared that way at the time. And a lot of things that I say are my impressions of things. And if I share confidential information with somebody and then it's turned into the public, it's not meant to be shared with everybody. I'm just a person that likes to communicate, and I like to share my ideas. And I think that's a healthy thing to do. And if somebody wants to betray me or violate my confidence by taking confidential stuff and putting it out there, then I think that's, you know, that's not right either. But, you know, those comments were not made without justification and without good reason. So, that's my response.
Ken, I was here when, and I supported you a lot when you were in Silks because the situation you were under was bad at that point in time. A lot of people know, Joe and John, a lot of them, and they all think they're very fine people. You, I think you need to look at yourself and your motives and what's going on and say, well, is there something that I'm doing? Okay, I really do believe you really need to do that a little bit. It's not 100% somebody else's wrong and 100% that you're right, okay? So maybe you make a little of adjustment, and there's some adjustment here, things will work out. But I guarantee you, we have some citizens that are very upset, okay? And they're not liking what they see. And what Dick said is right on. We don't want to see this squabble. Let it happen in Washington, not here. And we're not going to let it happen.
Well, you know, if you don't want to look at anything that, you know, any information that I have or anything that I can, that's up to you.
If you, collusion, if you said I was collusion, there'd be a lot more happening. Then there would be a lot more happening. I'm a consultant, and I deal with people that I can't stand, who I know have personal agendas. I don't go out, I can't. I haven't got that latitude. You're an elected official, and guess what? You don't have that latitude either. You have the latitude to criticize and be constructive and act in a professional manner. You don't have the other latitude.
Well, you know, with the decoy program, I'm trying to take my bad experience and turn it into a situation where it can be done right, where it can be done to really effectively reduce the sale of alcohol to minors. That's the way the program was written. I don't fault necessarily the police department, as I've looked into how other law enforcement agencies conduct it. And really, most of them are not conducting it right. So I'm going to try to see what I can do to make that right. That's a constructive thing. You know, but again, you know, what the city attorney did wasn't right, and perhaps my assumption was wrong, but what he did was not right.
Was calling him in collusion, is that correct?
Mr. Lutz, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Bukowski, you're not listening to anybody.
Oh, yes, I am.
Well, then quit shooting yourself in the foot.
Okay.
Are there any... Bob, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I want to say something, but it's getting late. This is a really bad experience that I think we've all had. I've talked to Joe, I've talked to John, I've talked to Ken, and we're trying to work this situation out. I think that Mr. Ladder brought forth a point a few minutes ago, that he's probably one of the oldest citizens in this room. I think I'm probably the second-oldest citizen in this room.
Nope.
Nope. Okay.
The third.
Third oldest.
The third. Well, what I'm alluding to is, is that years ago, we went through a process similar to this with another police department and another chief and another city manager that was not acceptable for this city. I've told each one of them, this is not acceptable, that we have to find a way that we can sit down and talk and be rationalized and get this behind us. Because as a city, we have too many things on our plate that we are trying to do. And if anyone has lived in this city any length of time and looked around and seen the things that have transcribed in this city, they can see what a hard-working staff that we have. If anyone has lived in this city for any period of time, they look around and see what kind of a police department that we have in this city. Why would we want to destroy that? Sure, Ken is headstrong at times, he's got some good ideas at times, but these things have to be corralled, and they have to be talked about, and they have to be brought into focus, where that we can make sense out of whatever you're saying and whatever you're doing, whatever John is saying and whatever Joe is saying. We have to take all this energy and put it together and make sure that we bring it forth, whether we can make this city work, and not on a personal agenda of anyone that's sitting up here or anyone that's sitting out there. It's just not going to work. I think that we are doing things... The other thing I want to say, too, is this, and I take responsibility for a lot of this that's happening right today. I think the council takes responsibility for a lot of this happening today. And that is, we did not do what we were supposed to have done when we let David Martin and Tom Graham put the marketplace into function. We know that it's a large project. We did not go to them, we did not stand up to them and say, "Look, you've got to put signage out here. Look, you've got to put security out here. Look, you guys have got to do certain things out here in order to make this thing work." Because if you don't, we're going to be joined up on our police department to make it work. And what has happened is, is that we kind of let it slip through our fingers, because we did not stand up and say, "These things have to happen." If we had a dead... I hear all these people talking about Christie Bar and Grill. I'm not too much worried about Christie Bar and Grill. What I'm worried about is the marketplace. This is where we have the problem. If we take care of the marketplace, Christie Bar and Grill has to take care of itself. It has to come into line, is what you want to say. But we want to say Christie Bar and Grill, let's look at what happens over there. I look at the other night, well, two or three weeks ago, I get out of bed at eleven o'clock at night, I have the police department to come pick me up, because I want to go out there and see what's happening. And what I see out there, it's amazing. That it's not just Christie Bar and Grill, it's the whole project that's a problem. You take, you can tell who's coming from Kimball's, you can tell who's coming from Carnival's, you can tell who's coming from the theater, you can tell who's coming from Christie Bar and Grill. And every time what's something happened is, is that all you have to do is have some, two or three young ladies come out, and all these guys, they see these young ladies, they start a conversation, they start a conversation, what happens? The whole thing gets bogged up, nobody can move. You have these people sitting out there in the parking lot, what are they doing? They're drinking, they're lotterying, hey, they're having loud music, they're just having a party in the parking lot. You know? All of us not on Christie Bar and Grill, it's the whole thing out there. We've got to do something to bring that thing back into focus. I think we started something last Friday night, and everything I've heard, I couldn't get out there Friday night, but I will be out there this Friday night. And what I heard, it's been very, very, it was a very good operation. But this is where it's got to start at, folks. It's got to start that we got to take that place back and make it safe. I heard one young man was saying tonight is that he want to walk around Emeryville being safe any time of day or the night. I want to see him do that. And the way we're going to do that is, is that we're going to take that whole establishment over there and turn it around. Once we turn the establishment around over there, as far as the marketplace is concerned, is, hey, Christie Bar and Grill has to confirm. If they don't confirm, then Christie Bar and Grill don't need to be in the city of Emeryville. But this is what we've got to do. This thing here, as far as John Flores, as far as Joe Colletti and so forth, hey, excuse me, excuse me, we've got to get rid of that, and we are going to get rid of it. I've been working on this thing now for the last three weeks. I mean, I told my wife, I said, "It's taking away from the ability to work on anything else." Because this is the important thing, because these are the two spokes in the wheel. If we let these two spokes in the wheel get broken, the whole thing is going to go to part. So I just want to say, I've said to Ken, I said that I support John, I support Joe, I support Ken. I support him in a way that I want these things to stop. I want these things to be able to talk about. If he's got a problem with John, if he's got a problem with anybody in the city, we have a procedure that we can take, that we can bring this to an executive council in the city council, let's talk about it before we send faxes all over the city and all over the country and talk about what a bad staff we've got, what a bad police department we've got. This is not the place to do it. That's not the way to do it. The way to do it is bring it to us, let us sit down and discuss it. Let's talk to each one like we are human beings. Let's talk to us like each one of us, we are man. Anything I've got to say to John Flores, I'm a man enough to come up to him and say it. Anything I've got to say to Joe, I'm a man enough to go up and say it. I'm got, don't put it on paper, go to the man. Let him know that, hey, I'm a man just like you. If we got a problem, let's talk about it and get these problems out of our face. This has got to stop, and I think it will. I hope that we started a process last Friday that's going to help this project and help this process to alleviate itself, because I think it can be done.
Thank you, Bob. I'd just like to second the comments that both Bob and Dick Cassis made. We have an outstanding staff here, from John Flores, the police chief, the fire chief, our department heads. And these are not idle words. You can look around this city and see the results of the efforts of this staff. I believe when I spoke to the Industries Association, I mentioned this fact, that a city council can sit up here and make policy, but if you do not have good, competent, professional staff, you can make all the policy you want, and it will not be implemented. What we have here is a group of people that are so dedicated to this city that we are extremely fortunate. And I agree with Bob Savage, if you're going to say something about someone, don't put it on a fax and send it out over the state of California to all the city attorneys in the state of California implying that this city attorney is somehow in collusion with a developer. That is not appropriate behavior. One of the things that Joe Lutz said struck very close to my heart, because he reflected on years ago, when we had a city that was run very much by personal agendas. And as I reflect on the past two or three months, and on the personal agenda of Councilmember Bukowski focused around the Christie Bar and Grill, and I certainly empathize with him, that this is his place of business, it's his livelihood, but the enormous amount of resources that the city has devoted to responding to these attacks on the part of Councilmember Bukowski has distracted us from doing the job that this council is up here to do, which is conduct the business of this city. And I would hope that this isn't a good situation, it is an ugly situation, but it is my firm belief that it is better to bring it out in the open and let people clearly understand what is going on here and what are the issues. And I'd like to respond to the head of the POA, because I think we have an outstanding police force. I think they do a remarkable job, and they take very seriously their oath, their sworn officers, they take very seriously their oaths to the state of California, as do the members of this city council in most regards. We are here to uphold the laws of the state of California. If any elected official tries to divert us from that course or tries to somehow use political pressure to divert us from obeying the laws of the state of California or upholding the Constitution, we have a significant problem in this city. And I hope this airing of the problems will let us all reflect. I hope that we can work together, resolve this personal issue, and move on to conduct the business of this city. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any items on the consent calendar?
I was thinking, why don't we move eight-four to current, so we don't have the same discussion again an hour and a half from now?
Eight-four.
I mean...
Okay.
You know, so we can, so we can complete the discussion. It just occurred to me that we're just going to do all this again.
Councilmember Harper, with all due respect, we are here to conduct the business of the city, and my own bias is that we do indeed conduct the business of the city and talk about the marketplace a little later. Do I hear a motion on the consent calendar?
Yeah, I want to move, I want to remove everything from it.
Okay.
With all due respect, Madam Mayor...
Councilmember Harper, start with item A.
Call the roll, please.
For what?
I just want a roll call vote on all of them.
Oh, we have a motion?
Sure. Move approval. Item A.
Second.
Second.
Would you call the roll, please? Thank you, Susan. Councilmember Bukowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Harper?
Aye.
Councilmember Savage?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cassis?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Can we group the three action recaps?
No, I, you know, I just, you know, with all due respect, every time the mayor starts out and addresses me and starts it out, with all due respect, whatever comes after that is, "I'm going to put you down big time, boy, and I'm just tired of it, and here's my thing." I just want to go through the consent calendar, one item at a time.
How about it?
Okay.
Item B.